Good afternoon, colleagues. Imina Trenta Cinku, Nala Lestla Tura in Guam is back from recess. When we last left, Senator Regina Bisco Lee had proffered an amendment. And on the amendment, Senator Theresa July, she's done. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Lee. First, we are on your amendment, Senator Lee, and there are a couple of senators that want to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This may answer some of the questions that my colleagues have. Two things were brought to my attention during the recess, and I wanted to address them for the body. So again, we are on page 2, line 25, and this amendment is an attempt to increase the compensation for disability from $520 to $1,011 per week. It's my understanding that the amendment that we passed out also includes changes to the additional language, but that's not my intention. My intention is to change only the $1,011 per week language. And so I just also want to add to my motion to have legal make technical corrections to this amendment.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are still on the Senator Bisco Lee amendment. And then you have one more, Senator?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the actions of the body. The gavel went down, and one of our colleagues would like to speak on the amendment.
Yes.
The previous amendment on the motion.
Yeah, the initial motion was to make technical corrections to this amendment, just adding the opportunity to make technical corrections to the amendment. So we have not gavelled down on the...
On the amendment. It was just to make technical... Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Lee, on a further verification, please proceed.
Sujus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Again, during the break, we had a productive discussion with some of the stakeholders. And Madam Speaker, I just wanted to demonstrate my commitment to our colleagues and to the body for an open and honest discussion on this amendment and on the entire bill, to get direct feedback from other stakeholders beyond employee and some employer advocates. So during the recess, I reached out to a couple of them, and I was able to discuss with the Employers Council regarding the proposed increase in maximum weekly compensation for disability. I was cautioned by one of their representatives regarding the $1,011 figure, and that adopting this increased figure risked their support that was expressed during the public hearing and could turn that into opposition for the bill. This information is being offered to my colleagues in the spirit of transparency and because members of this body have asked for this perspective. While I still believe that the increased figure is the right thing to do for the highest-earning workers out there, like doctors, like masters in construction trades, I will reiterate, the reason why this change was not done in committee is because I truly feel that it's best decided by the entire body. And so that's why I'm bringing it to all of you as an amendment on the floor. Whether we ultimately adopt, reject, or compromise on this amendment, the most important thing I want to impress on all of us is that updating these rates has been long overdue. And so I'd rather have this bill passed to everyone's benefit than risk for it to be rejected to nobody's benefit because of one provision. So I beg the indulgence of my colleagues to act on this amendment in a way that will hopefully preserve your affirmative vote for the entire bill. And just, I would plead with my colleagues that let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Sujus Mossi.
Thank you, Senator Lee. On the Senator Regina Bisco Lee amendment, Senator Taidegui Minority Leader, you're recognized.
Sujus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Just a question first before I get into my comments on this and my concerns. Is the previous speaker, the author of the amendment, said that there was discussion about... I mean, she was speaking so fast, I'm not quite sure what she meant by there was discussion that it was agreed to, that 520 was fine, and then 1,100 came up, and somebody said they wouldn't support that. Can she say it again exactly what happened during that time?
Yes, I will ask the sponsor. Senator Lee, would you like to use, to her request?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So I'll just start from the beginning.
Just a little bit slower.
Sure. So the existing law, the maximum for compensation for disability is at $250 today. The bill as introduced and the bill as substituted has increased that amount to $520 based on inflation for today's rates. So that's where we are currently. The amendment that I'm proffering is to increase that based on some feedback that we received during the public hearings in the amount of $1,011. And again, this increase helps us to think about some of the highest-earning workers because we're talking about the top of the threshold. So we already established a minimum, Madam Speaker, and so this would just increase the maximum amount paid out. So for really high-earning workers like doctors and masters in construction trades, if they were to, God forbid, get injured on the job, they would be allowed to be considered for this maximum payout of $1,000 a week. And I hope that answers my colleague's question.
Thank you, Senator Lee.
Actually, Madam Speaker, that didn't because the verbiage she used was "they would not support." And that's what I thought I heard her saying.
So if you want to further clarify...
And Madam Speaker, she never mentioned that when she said she spoke about this, that this would be a reason not to support it by going up. That's the part I want to hear.
So Senator Taidegui, I will ask the good author again of the amendment to further clarify. Senator Lee, would you like to use to that question?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker. I'm happy to. Sujus Mossi, for the opportunity. Again, during the recess, based on some questions that I had from my colleagues that were posed previously, I reached out to stakeholders on this bill to include the Employers Council regarding this proposed amendment to increase the maximum weekly compensation for disability. Madam Speaker and colleagues, I was cautioned by one of their representatives that this amendment that I'm attempting to proffer right now for $1,011, that adopting this increased figure may risk their support expressed during the public hearing. So they expressed support for the entire bill as presented, but I wanted to be very straightforward and let our stakeholders know what we are attempting to change on the floor, and they were not in support of this amendment. So I hope I'm making myself very clear to all of our colleagues. I don't want to risk the body's support for the entire bill, and I just felt it was really important to be very transparent and ensure that we're all working on the same sheet of music here, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Taidegui Minority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank the author for explaining it exactly the way she said it the first time because I just wanted to make it clear. Here we're having individuals, the stakeholders, people who are representing those employees that are going to affect them as well as affect our government, and they don't support this increase. They said it would jeopardize it. So I'm not sure why we're even doing this amendment. I appreciate the transparency, but it doesn't make sense if we're supposed to move on an amendment that those representatives and stakeholders did not support. So that's number one, an issue already. Number two, the good senator from Jonah had brought up the concern that was brought up from BBMR in the fiscal note. And, you know, I'm not saying that I don't support the increase in workman's compensation. My concern here is the amount that we're doing it at, jumping straight from this amount straight to 1,000, and not having anything to show on how much this is going to affect the government of Guam when they... On the amount that we have to come up with, where are we going to get the funds to pay for this? That it may cost up to 150% to 200% of what? Last year's predictions of $857 and $218, is that the prediction? Then you talk on the government side. What about the private sector side? The fiscal note says that "The Bureau requests comments and testimony from Department of Labor." Department of Labor stated the following: "There would be an impact of government employee claims increasing the cost to government." Increasing the cost to government. There would also be an impact in the private sector in the form of increased premiums as insurance companies cover the additional costs and risk.
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker.
Overall, Senator...
There's a point of information right now that takes precedence. Senator Lee, I will address your point of information.
Sujus Mossi, Madam Speaker. The previous speaker had mentioned that stakeholders now do not support this amendment. I just want to clarify, this is information that was given from one stakeholder. The amendment that's being proffered was actually discussed in a public hearing. Many of our stakeholders were there at the public hearing and had an opportunity to give their feedback on it. Many of our stakeholders do support this increase, and I just again want to remind the body that this is an increase to the threshold. This is the maximum allowable amount. You can't get any more than this amount of money. And that doesn't mean that if you go before the Workers' Compensation Commission, that you know, it depends on how much money you make and, I mean, what your earnings are. So it's going to be between the minimum that we set and the maximum, so between the floor and the ceiling, Sujus Mossi.
Thank you. Senator, thank you for the point of information. Senator Taidegui Minority Leader, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, okay, well, then she said employees' rep. Employees' rep. So you figured that's a representation. So just to, you know, clarify, if she wants to clarify what she said by employees and a rep from that association, I appreciate that as well.
Yes, I'm happy to, Madam Speaker.
So other than that...
So just again, for a point of information.
And I'm talking.
Hold on.
I'm talking.
Senator Taidegui, please address the floor. Again, based on the increase, if there is a point of information, I understand you have the floor, please address everything to the podium. One moment, please. There is a point of information. Please, Senator Lee.
Sujus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Again, just a point of information. What I had said, and I'll repeat again for the third time, is that I had a discussion with the Employers Council, a representative from the Employers Council, and that's the information that I was given based on one of our stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Then Minority Leader, you are still recognized. Please proceed.
So back to what I was reading from fiscal note, from BBMR, it states here that overall, since WC insurance is mandatory... Well, why don't I just, because I was interrupted, why don't I go ahead and start again?
Senator Taidegui Minority Leader, please, just to provide the decorum, please.
I am. There is decorum, Madam Speaker, as I'm trying to explain something and just sure that my concentration was lost, though I'm just starting from the beginning for my sake. Is that okay? Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to finish again so I can go back since I was interrupted. "The Bureau requests comments and testimony from the Guam Department of Labor." Department of Labor stated the following: "There will be impact to government employee claims increasing the cost to government. There would also be an impact to the private sector in the form of increased premiums as insurance companies cover the additional costs and risk. Overall, since WC insurance is mandatory for all employers, this increased cost of doing business may be passed on to the general public in some form." That being said, Madam Speaker, I think there should be some kind of gradual step. It would give us the opportunity not to be hit so hard financially. We've done gradual steps. I think we did that with the pay raises. I mean, I'm sorry, for minimum wage increase, there was a gradual step. So I think something like this, Madam Speaker, and then I'm trying to get my amendment on the floor, to put it in a gradual step. I think the government of Guam can't be hit so quickly, so fast, with an increase that we're not sure how much it's going to cost us. And not only the government of Guam, but the private sector as well. Because we all know when we increase something like this that infects the insurance company, that this is going to be trickled down to the consumer, those paying premiums. It's going to affect them too. So, Madam Speaker, I'm asking for a short recess so I can get this amendment, it's just being proffered right now, to provide some kind of gradual increase instead of hitting directly to the 1,100, oh, 1,011.
Thank you, Minority Leader. I will go ahead and allow you that opportunity to come back for an amendment. I do know that there are a couple of other colleagues who would like to talk, so I will allow you to come, for you to come back. Senator Joseph Augustine, I will address this.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Senator Augustine. I will go ahead and address you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I want to first start out with, I support the bill. But when we come to the amount of 1,000, kind of support the gradual increase to the 1,000 or whatever the amount may be. But I'm waiting for a response from my OAB office so that we can have a clear understanding of what it takes. Because the initial 500 was an easy one, an easy yes for me. The 1,000, hmm, maybe a little bit, need to reduce it a little bit and make it a gradual step. And I can agree with that, the gradual step. But overall, I support the bill. We need to upgrade. There's many laws in Guam we need to upgrade. We need to update, correction, not just upgrade, but update. And this is one of them that we need to update. Too many people are getting hurt, and they're not getting the appropriate compensation when they have to leave their jobs. So I do support the bill in its intent, but maybe we need to adjust the amount so that we're not impacted because, like BBMR's report is, we don't know yet the cost, but we do need to update the law. So I support it.
Sujus Mossi, Senator Sinoc... Anybody else on the amendment? Senator Mary Torres, I will recognize you.
Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. I rise in support of this bill and this amendment, and what I want to bring everybody's attention to is what we're talking about. We are talking about workers' compensation under Chapter 9, 22 Guam Code annotated. Coverage for workers' compensation occurs and shall be payable under this title in case of disability or death of an employee, but only if the disability or death results from an injury sustained while engaged in industrial employment or public employment or both as defined in one of the sections. We are talking about disability or death that occurs to an employee under a rightful claim that is adjudicated per all the rules and regulations contained in Guam statute. Now, I do not believe that anyone deserves a blanket coverage. If you are earning $85,000 or $22,000, your coverage under workers' compensation shouldn't be one standard thing. So the idea that you can have a minimum or a maximum depending on your earning capacity is only fair. It's only fair. You know, we're talking about disability or death, and we're talking about a process that determines whether it is a just claim and what is compensable. So let's not lose sight of, do I want to, do I not want to, how much is this going to cost? If someone is injured or killed on the job, and there's a process to determine if there's a rightful claim for that disability injury, injury resulting disability or death, then rightfully so. I'm advocating for the person who potentially becomes disabled or dies on the job through fault of the employer. So let's just be sensible. We have to pay what is rightfully due a person when that person is injured or dies. Rightfully due. So, you know, let's... In the world of insurance, there are those risks. You can pay out a lot, or you can pay out a little, you can pay none at all, but it all depends. So at this point in time, for us to go, become too conservative because we don't want to pay what someone would, you know, earn in the course of a normal day on the job, I say, let's just be fair. And let's just be sensible, and that's the nature of insurance. We pay it whether we collect or not, or whatever, and, you know, that's not to say that everybody aspires to pay out under workman's comp or that claims will escalate. There's a process to determine if they're bogus claims or rightful claims, and let that process happen and let the authorities that be make that rightful determination. But I think as policymakers, let's not cheat people out of what is rightfully theirs. And if they are going to keep their livelihoods and not have their families or their lives crash because they're disabled and can't work, you know, let's keep them whole. I want to be that honest, upright employer, and I pray to God the rest of us do. So let's just do the right thing. This is a good bill, and I support it.
Sujus Mossi, Senator Mary Torres. Anyone else on the Bisco Lee amendment? Senator Sabina Perez, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do support this bill. I think it's important that we support our workers who have been injured on the job. I have some reservations regarding the increase from 520 to 1,011. I think partly because, mostly because, the impacts to, you know, the fiscal impact. So in BBMR, they were unable to themselves determine the fiscal impact at 520, and I think maybe we should take a wait-and-see approach. If it's 520, let's see what the impact is, and then maybe we can look at the higher number. You know, looking at, you know, we don't know, like, for instance, will it really escalate the cost of government or escalate the cost of doing business here? And I think it's wise to do a wait-and-see, wait-and-see how this 520 works out, and if it's not much of an increase, yeah, let's bump it up to a level that we can afford. Because, you know, the chances are that if businesses can't afford this, and what is the alternative? So I think when we move together, I think it's a stronger move forward and to progress rather than to move quickly. So, yeah, so that's my thinking behind this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else on the amendment? Yes, you did. No, you spoke on the amendment, sir. Your time...
I...
We are still on the Senator Lee amendment, not on the main motion.
Yeah, I wanted to maybe offer an amendment to her amendment? An amendment to her amendment? Not possible? Yeah, I spoke with OAB, and I've got some information that we can share with everybody.
So Senator Sinoc, I'm going to direct that as a point of information for you. State your point of information, please.
The point of information is that, as I contacted my office, the Office of Finance and Budgeting, one of the factors we all have to understand, and we all agree we need to update the law, but we need to understand also the financial impact that GovGuam and everybody on, everybody in Guam is going to feel. There's a rate that's going to change, and they've advised me that if anything, start with the rate that was on the bill, and you can gradually increase it to the amount that's being offered as the amendment because otherwise, we don't know what the impact is today. In the next couple of months, my colleagues, we're going to be sitting down, talking about the budget. And when we start talking about the budget, the budget folks are going to come to us and say, you know, we're already anticipating an insurance negotiation that's going to talk about the cost that's going to, may jump, may not. And all I'm offering is that we start with the 520, and then gradually, one year from now, to the 1,000, it's something workable, something that if we feel, if our colleagues feel during the budget session that we need to amend this law, then we can adjust it based on the financial impact to the GovGuam and to everybody else. Because we're not the only ones going to be affected. Every business on Guam is going to feel this when they have to adjust paying on the insurance cost. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sinoc. Anyone else on the Lee amendment? If not, before I... Yeah, I'm going to ask, Vice Speaker, can you come up for a minute, please? Sujus Mossi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise to this, rise in support to this amendment. And I want to share with you that just by listening to the previous speaker, who was the chair of OAB, asking that maybe there could be a compromise to work on the legislation with the good author to this main amendment, I just wanted to share on a personal perspective on the realities of this compensation provisions that are in statute today and reflect on several constituents who have come into my office in the past, not as a speaker, but previously when I was in the 32nd and 33rd Guam Legislature. There was an employee who, by every means, was in law enforcement, had a good job, did very well, graduated, just everything was going great, and that individual in law enforcement got into a really bad accident, an accident not of his cause. And because of that, that individual was not, could not work, was not allowed to work. Workman's comp provided the amounts that were given today, and because of that, that constituent was not able to provide for a livelihood for the family. Because if you look at a basic salary of a law enforcement who's graduated, who's gone through the course, and I'm just talking from the government's perspective, I'm not even talking from the private industry's perspective, Madam Speaker, because we look at the construction workers, we look at the professional workers. In the government alone, we talk about law enforcement, we talk about those positions that are of critical in nature, even hazardous, who also have hazardous pay. When you're in an accident not of your own cause, and you have to go through this workman's comp... and you have to go through this workman's comp, sometimes it's almost belittling. The good, uh, uh, Speaker from Santa Rita spoke about the parity and the fairness. When that family came to me and asked me what they could do to help, the only answer that I could say to them was, we would have to do legislation to update and improvise, I mean, and to change. We would have to work with all the stakeholders, and more importantly, we would, we would have to make sure to at least try and get your payments in time. Let alone having to go off island and saying, well, those trips were not, were not approved because workman's comp didn't approve it for some reason or another. And without getting into the major details, I could not believe that the salary of that constituent, based on the salary, and based on trying to make ends meet because of the workman's comp provision. And mind you, this is not just for regular workman's comp, this is for the disability in general, and I, for me personally, just hearing the constituents that have come my way, knowing that what they're getting to what is being afforded today, I'm going to be brave enough to tell you that it's still not enough. But again, as a policymaker, we need to be able to look at the bigger picture and make sure that we kind of come to a reasonable resolution. The offer, Madam Speaker, was asked that we look at a progressive stage up, and I think, I think, I, I personally wanted to see that the amendment in its entirety be supported and ask my colleagues, because that's not the only case. I, I don't have the numbers of the, what, how many constituents are under the workman's comp program? I do know that there is a number, and it's, it's not very low. And I do know that the payments for them to provide for the livelihood of what they were getting, and what has happened during the, the accident, or the, the issue of, of them becoming disabled, it doesn't, it doesn't compare. And I think it's really important that this is why when issues like this come to play, that we fore the, the best opportunity for our constituents or our, our community residents at large. And when I looked at the, the amendment as, as introduced and as proffered, I, I, I looked at maybe even wanting to ask the author of the bill to increase. And someone probably think I'm going crazy, but I'm not. Because if we were to look at all the constituents, the, the numbers of residents that are under the workman's comp program, or were under the workman's comp program, and the timelines that they had to work with, I'm going to tell you that the constituents that have come through my office have had to go through foreclosure, have had to have a loved one get a second or third job. I've had to have their children step up to the plate to help, just so that the livelihood of paying a home mortgage, paying for the personal family bills, paying for the utilities, had to come to play. So even if you took an average salary at a minimum, and you totaled it up and divided it by 12 to work a monthly income, even those at the lowest bracket within the government level, it's not enough to suffice this amendment as, as it's getting upgraded right now. So, Madam Speaker, I personally rise in support of this amendment. I'm not going to ask to increase it any further. I do know that the Oversight Chair of OAB wants to look at the graduation of, of this, and... And I'm hoping that, I'm going to ask for that, and I know we're up against time, but I'm going to ask for that moment's recess just so that I can see, because I literally have, was working on an amendment to increase it and not decrease it, or not even work a graduation. So I'd like to talk to the good, to the author of the amendment, just so that I can look at a compromise. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, we have a lot of time, so we are going to take a quick recess. We are back from recess. Speaker Barnes, you still have the floor.
Sijous Massey, Madam Speaker, and Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity...
Just a moment.
Thank you.
Please proceed, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity for the moment's recess to confer with both the Oversight Chair on OAB and the author of the amendment. And if I may ask a question to her, Madam Speaker, if I can ask the good author a question?
Please proceed with the inquiry.
Thank you. And maybe based on, on the example that she utilized on the actual impact of this funding, on this amendment moving forward, what would be the, the rationale, or what would be the total amount utilized and the per annum for that constituent or that individual allowed for that workman's comp? What would be the maximum allowable for that, and if she could yield to that?
Yes. Senator Lee, do you yield to the question?
Sijous Massey, Madam Speaker, just to give some clarity on this issue and hopefully answer the question that was posed. Given the current rate that's in this bill right now for the maximum, that would be $520 a week. Given that there are 52 weeks in a year, we're talking about $27,040 as it stands. So that would be, if this amendment doesn't pass, that would be the maximum allowable amount, $27,000 a year. What we're, what we're attempting to do is this amendment would increase that in your, your weekly compensation to $1,011. Again, $1,011 over the course of the year, that's $52,572. So let's say there's a construction worker. I think I have numbers on that, too. Like a first-line supervisor of construction trades, or an extraction worker. The mean weekly wage is about $909. So the existing language that we're using for 520, it wouldn't really help them. And, and like a previous speaker had mentioned, many of these men and women who get injured on the job, they have obligations. They have children that they have to feed, they have a roof over their head, they have mortgages that they need to pay. And our goal with this bill is to really help them to cover their, their cost of living and, and focus on getting better, so that they can hopefully return back to their jobs. So again, that's the discussion that we're having here. And this maximum that we're trying to increase for $1,011 each week would equate to $52,000 in a year. And again, that's the ceiling, that's the most that they could be paid out. Even if they are wage earners that make over $200,000, $300,000 a year, like anesthesiologists and, and other folks out there, they would only be able to be compensated that $52,000 at that maximum allowable rate. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Madam Speaker, does this answer suffice your inquiry?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, it does. And I just want to say that in the efforts of, of working this amendment to look at the bigger picture, working for those men and women who have been injured and disabled from, from incidents not caused by them, I think it's important that we at least provide that opportunity. Again, this legislation has not been revised, upgraded, updated, like the good OAB Chair has said. This is the time to work it. Why do we keep to, have to keep coming back? I think this is a level playing field. Again, I didn't want to blindside anybody by saying that I thought that this was still not enough based on, on, on everything that's happening within our community and, and the way the cost of living is working with our residents. But I'm willing to at least work with this amendment and support the effort. So I stand and rise in support of this amendment, Madam Speaker. Sijous Massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the RBL amendment? I believe Senator Tidaway, you requested for some time to proffer another amendment, so you're still granted that additional time. So please speak on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and we have the amendment in front of us. We're just having them make some prints, and I appreciate the time.
As Senator Tidaway is still working, anyone else on this amendment? Anyone else wishing to speak? Colleagues, if I may, anyone else wishing to speak on this amendment? If not, has the amendment been passed out, Sergeant of Arms? Moment's recess. Moment's recess. Senator Tidaway? Aminia Trenta Cinko, Nalisa Turen Guaon is back from recess. Senator Tidaway, you have an amendment. Minority Leader, please proceed.
I'd like to thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity for a short recess to allow me to print out this amendment. And it's been passed to my colleagues, and I've worked with legal as well as the Clerk's Office to ensure that the position and the language, because as you know, there was an amendment made prior to that on the same amendment, so it could be a little bit confusing. So Madam Speaker, the amendment is on lines 25 and 26, page 2. To amend the bill to read, Section 2, 9107b of Chapter 9, Title 22, Guam Code Annotate is hereby amended to read, B1, "Compensation for disability shall not exceed $520 per week on the effective date of this act, which shall increase to $1,011 per week effective October 1, 2021," and then also to allow the legal counsel to make any technical corrections moving forward. Madam Speaker, with the conversation that was going on by several of my colleagues, concerns with regards to, you know, the impact that it's going to make to not only the government of Guam financially, but also to the private sector. Because let's take, for instance, a store that employs, you know, 300 people, and we know that 1.5% of payroll is accumulated for the premiums for that individual. Now, nobody here knows exactly how much this increase is going to be, exactly. So that's very concerning. And we also know that's very concerning is the trickle-down effect that it happens when we create legislation that's going to cause prices to go up. That's an issue, too. And we know, and in the private sector, that they're going to make an adjustment to any additional increase in premiums. And where is that going to shoulder to? When we're walking down the grocery store? So this only just allows us some time to figure out how much this is going to cost from 250 going to 520, and what the effects this is going to bring us in the next six months. Then after that, Madam Speaker, effective October 1, 2021, we go to the full amount. This prepares the public, this prepares the government on what the impact will be. I stand in support of this measure that increases workman's comp, there's no doubt about that. But we need to be fiscally responsible, too, not only to the government of Guam, but also to the businesses out there. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Minority Leader. Anyone else on the Tidaway amendment? Anyone on the Tidaway amendment? Senator Sabina, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I think it's important that, you know, that we are conservative in regards to increasing the amount. But I think the question still remains, so what is the impact of this $520? I think, you know, I prefer to see, you know, after the increase, we evaluate what the impact is before we go ahead and committing to this $1,000 in a year's time. So I think it's still, the question still remains with this amendment. And, you know, we haven't really addressed really what the impact is. So I think it's important to evaluate the impact before we commit to this increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Perez, so Senator Perez, is that a form of an objection? Okay. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Trelawney, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I understand the intent of this gradual approach, and it, I haven't fully concluded yet, and I would like to share my thoughts. I mean, I understand that this would give us an opportunity to gauge the impact more effectively, and that's what we're all a little bit concerned about now, is that while we're willing to raise the rates that they will be compensated, we're just a little bit unsure whether this, especially unanticipated, is, you know, whether the businesses are going to be able to effectively handle this. And I don't think that anybody's trying to cheat people out of their compensation. And I don't think that anybody's trying to cheat people out of their compensation. I'm trying very hard to figure out that, you know, how we got to 520 in the first place. So, in the committee report, it shows that the 520 was based on changes in the Consumer Price Index since 1988. The methodology was put together by the team of the sponsor and validated by the University of Guam faculty. That was what was presented at the public hearing. And then how we got to the 1,000 amount was because, according to the Guam Federation of Teachers, that would put Guam at the average, I guess, of all the other states. And so, I'm looking at a listing of the other states, of their weekly payments, and I'm just trying to figure out how, they all have different amounts. Not a single one of them has the same amount. They're all different, and I'm trying to figure out what formula did they use to come up to their amounts. Putting us at the average or the median, I think is the average, is going to make our rates higher than Hawaii, New York, Texas, 31 other states. It would put us below on this list 20 other states. And so, it's just that. I think we're just all trying to feel comfortable with this. And of course, I think I would love to be the one to say, let's raise it up to 5,000. Let's give our employees as much as we can, maximum. But we have to just deal with the reality of the employers. We have to keep these businesses thriving. And so, we're trying to find that perfect balance here that they can afford, that will not set them, you know, that will not decrease the number of small businesses that we're trying to encourage here. And that's just it. It's just, I just want, you know, I appreciate the concerns of my colleagues as to, you know, whether we have adequate data. But, you know, I'm willing to take the risk for sure up to 520, to 1,000, if I could be assured by these companies that they would not, you know, this would not impact them negatively. We're discouraged because BBMR says that in their fiscal note, that this will negatively impact businesses. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator. I have Senator Regine Bisco-Lee and then Senator Louise. Senator Regine.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this amendment, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues who worked to build consensus on this. And I hope that this can bring us to a place where ultimately we move to pass this long overdue update for the benefit of our entire community. So, again, I stand in support of this amendment, and I thank my colleagues.
Sisus Masi. Senator Louise.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't think there's any question that any of us feel that we do need to increase the workman's compensation minimum, or maximum, rather, that has been there since 1988. I don't think there's any question that we need to. It's very obvious that we do. How we're going to get there is another story. And just as the previous speaker or the author of the main bill mentioned, that she wanted this discussion to happen because she would much rather that it does pass in its entirety than to fail just because of this one amount. And so, just looking at this, at first, when I saw the 1,011, I was kind of shocked at the increase from 250 up to 1,011. But with this amendment here, I believe this makes sense. It's a compromise, and we can gradually make this happen and increase the workman's compensation. So, I rise in support of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi. Senator Pito Cholai.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this amendment. However, I just want to make an amendment to the amendment. And maybe if we can leave out the increase to 1,011 per week effective October 1st, maybe we can just delay on that, and let's see what happened with the 520 a week. Because if you compute 1,011, we're going to be heading up to like, increasing it to like 52,000 a year. So, I just want to make that amendment to the amendment, and maybe leave that thing out, the increase October of 2021.
Yeah, we need to dispose of this amendment first. Senator Pito, so I'm going to go ahead and work with the colleagues on this amendment. We need to dispose before we can, so there is an amendment to the main amendment. Senator Cholai, I will address you after. There has been an objection. No, you can't. I'm going to ask, if there's nobody else wishing to speak on the Titegui amendment, I know that the good senator from Inalahan or Agania said she will yield right now. Senator Sabina Perez, I'll give you the floor at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to withdraw my objection, but I would like to proffer amendment, because we've run out of amendments of the amendments.
I understand. So, what we'll do is, we will go ahead and dispose of the Titegui amendment, and I will ask for the motion on the motion to withdraw the objection. There are no objections. Motion carries. On the, I will just address Senator Moylan at this time. Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For any voting, I kindly request to recuse myself on this bill, please. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Moylan, if I may, because of the recusal, please state the reason why you're going to recuse, because the body needs to vote.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm currently involved, of course, with the company that does provide this type of insurance, and I feel it's unfair if I was to give an opinion or any type of influence to be considered as interest that may not be in the good interest of this body. So, therefore, I kindly request to recuse myself.
Thank you. On that motion to recuse, are there any objections?
Just a point of order. I believe, Madam Speaker, you have to make a motion.
Yeah, he made a motion.
No, he did not make a motion. He said, "I would like." Is this a motion that we're entertaining?
Just to state for the record, as of the presider, shall the senator, for the reasons assigned by the member, be excused from voting? Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the Titegui amendment, are you willing to close, or are you call for the vote? Are there any objections? Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are still, thank you, Minority Leader, we are still on the Senator Regine Bisco-Lee main amendment as amended. Senator Perez, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Request for a short recess while we get it sent to the clerks preparing the amendment right now.
Is the amendment done?
They're working on it right now, so.
Okay.
Just a brief recess.
Ymina Chen-Tai-Sinko, Nalas Laturan-Guahan is back from recess. I understand they're making copies of the amendment, and I'm going to ask Senator Perez to go ahead and start speaking on her amendment as we are up against the time. Senator Perez, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My thoughts have been actually... I would prefer to look at the amendment so I can speak to it. Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. So, I would like to offer this amendment. It will add a new subsection 3 to Section 9107B. It reads, "The Bureau of Budget and Management Research shall transmit to Ilas Latura a fiscal note relative to each of the rate increases pursuant to..." note relative to each of the rate increases pursuant to subsection two of this section, which shall indicate the effect upon the revenues or the expenditure of any funds of the government of Guam. Such fiscal notes shall be transmitted to Eles Latura within six months of the effective date of each rate increase." So, I think this amendment is being offered to address the issue about what is the fiscal impact to these increases. I think that, you know, the more information that we have, you know, as far as, you know, fiscal impact, I think it would give us some pause as to how is it affecting everything else in government operations. You know, granted, as we know, the cost will increase in government due to this, but we just want to be sure that we're going in the right direction and it's not unduly affecting things that we expect our government to do as far as our, you know, healthcare, our safety, education. So, we want to make sure that we're moving together and progressing together rather than unwittingly affecting government in a way that impacts our whole community. So, you know, I'm for this bill. I just want to make sure that we're moving in a very informed fashion. So, this is the reason for this amendment.
So, Senator Perez, for the record, you need to say that you want to make an amendment to Senator Rajin Biskel Lee's original amendment as amended?
No, this is a whole new amendment, so it's an amendment on its own.
Okay, so one moment, please. Let me dispose of Senator Lee's amendment first. So, on Senator Rajin's Biskel Lee's amendment as amended, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Sergeant of Arms, Senator Perez has spoke on the amendment. May I have the copies right now, please? I'm going to go ahead at this time and acknowledge Senator Justin Augustine on the Senator Perez's amendment.
Madam Speaker, as our colleagues are concerned about the impact, I've contacted the Office of Finance and Budget to send me what the budget is today in GovGuam in the Workman's Fund, and then from there, we can measure exactly what the impact could be. And while we're waiting for everything else to circulate, when we do get that amendment, then I will speak as soon as I get that info. All right? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, the amendment is on page three, line six. I know they're making copies. Does anyone else wish to speak on that? Senator Tadeu Gui, I will recognize you.
Madam Speaker, only that I ask that we wait a discussion and being able to speak on it unless we have the amendment in front of us because I don't know exactly what it says, and it's not fair that we can discuss something when we don't have it in front of us. So, I ask that we just wait until it comes to us. Thank you.
Colleagues, the amendment has been passed out. Does anybody wish to speak on the amendment? Is there an objection to this? Sergeant of Arms, can we call the good senator from Gigo In? The amendment has been passed out. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Senator Tadeu Gui, Minority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just have a question for the author of the amendment.
Please proceed.
So, in this amendment that's been proffered, it requests that a fiscal note relative to each of the rate increases pursuant to the subsection two of this section provides a report on the effects. Would this be required before, okay, it says it's transmit within six months of effective date of each rate increase, so that means that this would actually transpire on October 1st, 2020?
I will ask Senator Perez, would you like to answer the question?
I do, Madam Speaker. So, looking at the bill, the date of enactment would be 120 days after, sorry, 120 days after we pass the bill. So, I guess if we would have to kind of calculate, so six months from this time, from that time, so that would be, so now it's what, January? So, that would probably be November, yeah, November. So, by November, they would have, they would have to produce a fiscal note regarding the impact to government. Hope that answers the question.
Senator Tadeu Gui.
Yes, Madam Speaker, that does answer the question I have. I have no more questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment as proffered by Senator Sabina Perez? Senator Justin Augustine, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I kind of support the bill because it doesn't say to stop the bill. It only says, tell me what the impact is going to be. So, that being said, I'm in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Sis Luas Massey, Senator Justin Augustine, anyone else on the Perez amendment? Senator Mary Torres, I will recognize you.
Madam Speaker, the retiring speaker brought up a point which highlights that this amendment really is of no consequence, and the fiscal impact is going to be determined anyway when the agencies go through the budget process. So, whether you have it or not, the fiscal impact is going to be realized or it's going to be determined by all the respective agencies collectively, the government, as the budget process happens. But the fact of the matter is, it's not going to, it's not going to allow the increase to roll back or be stalled, so I just think that it's almost an unnecessary addition to the bill because it's inevitable and it has no consequence or impact anyways.
So, Senator Torres, can I take that?
With that, I'll object then to the...
Thank you. There has been an objection. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Perez, would you like to close or call for the vote?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, I think in looking at this, it's really important to kind of inform policy with as much information that we can get, and, you know, in light of this, the comment regarding the budget cycle, so, you know, in November, that comes after the budget cycle. So, I think, or if you look at it forward, it's coming before the next budget cycle is determined. I think that it's important to kind of plan for the future when these agencies are developing their budgets. You know, if you're looking forward to the year 2022, they can actually determine what the impact is to their budgets based on, that's a factor that they can look at. So, I'm just thinking that, yeah, I think it's important information to segregate because, you know, in these agencies, when they're coming up with their budget, you know, they may determine, they may not be as clear as to how the impact of this is going to be. So, I'm just thinking that, you know, the more information that we have, the better. Whether these directors are going to be cognizant of the impact of this particular bill versus they will see the overall need of their agency versus really identifying what is, how is this going to particularly impact the functioning of their agencies? And I think too, you know, just as, you know, good governance, good procedures, you know, with the policies that we make, I think that we should have certain measures. We can't, I feel that if we're just passing things for the idea that it's for the common good, I think there should be some indicators and measurements on how we determine if these policies are really effective or if it's causing a huge impact. So, I don't see that this is a negative thing. You know, I think that, you know, we need to be held accountable for how we develop these policies. So, I think that's my take. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. There has been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor of Senator Perez's amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes. On the main motion, on the main motion, if there are no others, Senator Lee, would you like to close?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, given the importance of this lifeline and the considerable investment of capital and time paid by both employers and employees, it is time to enact necessary changes to the workers' compensation law. And again, Madam Speaker, I want to take the opportunity to thank all the stakeholders who were active and frank participants in the development process for this bill over many months. This is a bill that was introduced in the last term and brought back for this term. So, particularly, I'm really grateful to the representatives of the Insurance Association of Guam, the Guam Chapter of the Society for Human Resource Management, SHRM, the Guam Department of Labor Director De La Sola and his team, the Guam Federation of Teachers, the Employers Council, Ms. Nancy Tan, Ms. Laney Delaguen, Attorney Dana Guterres, Attorney Jerry Diaz, Attorney John Bell, for all being engaged with us. I'd also like to recognize the previous work achieved by past members of the Guam Legislature in support of our injured workers. Madam Speaker, Senator Elizabeth P. Ariola pioneered the changes to the rates in the 19th legislature by amending certain sections of the government code relative to workers' compensation. Speaker Vicente Pangolinan introduced measures to streamline the process for workers' compensation hearings in the 25th Guam Legislature, and Senator Rory J. Rispisho introduced a measure to authorize administrative leave for individuals injured that were certified by the Workers' Compensation Program in the 31st Guam Legislature. Madam Speaker, when these rates were adopted, a 50-pound bag of rice was $10. A two-bedroom apartment in Timuning was the going rate for about $550 a month. Infant formula was less than $11 for a whole case. It is impossible to afford today's cost of living on a compensation based on 30-year-old prices. But that's just the fiscal reason for this needed update. There are deeper, more meaningful motivations for all of us to act. I know that the private medical nature of these cases means that it can be difficult to put a human face on workers' compensation, but one specific reason that I'm committed to seeing these reforms through dates back to when I was a staffer here in the legislature some six years ago. Through then-Senator Tina Munya Barnes's office, I met Mr. Q, a GovGuam retiree whose workplace injury resulted in an amputation. He needed our assistance to navigate through the adjudication process and was in tremendous pain awaiting the fitting of a proper leg prosthesis. Madam Speaker, my husband is a firefighter and often finds himself and his team in harm's way, and so it was really hard to hear and even harder to see suffering caused by the lack of movement in Mr. Q's filed workers' compensation claim. Thankfully, we were able to help, and Mr. Q did fly off island to Hawaii to see a specialist, and his approved claim also allowed for on-island follow-up visits to track the fit of his But unfortunately, Madam Speaker, there are too many Mr. Qs out there, suffering in physical and emotional pain while this outdated law drowns them in red tape and unjust cap payouts based on an old cost of living. Madam Speaker, I urge all of us here to work together to make this happen for our employers and employees and to pass this measure because it's time, because it's fair, because it's right. And with that, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 200-35 as amended and further substituted on the floor into the voting file.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Colleagues, it's four minutes to 5:00 p.m., and we will, I will ask for a motion, but before I do that, I only humbly ask my colleagues to please, we have several, more than six items on the agenda, and I'm hoping that we take the time to look at all the bills and if there's any amendments that we, in the interest of time and allowing legal counsel to work on the engrossments, I'm asking that my colleagues please submit the amendments to both legal counsel and the clerks to look over the bills in the efforts to saving time as we are hoping to vote by Friday afternoon, late afternoon. So, with that being said, Vice Speaker, I will, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sis Luas Massey, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make the motion to recess until 09:00 tomorrow morning.
On that motion without any objection, we are in recess to 9:00 a.m.